Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to another episode of the City Chatter Podcast. I'm John Burnstrom, your host, Public Information Officer for the City of Grand Forks. And joining me this week, City Councilmember Ward Six Mike Friedols.
Five.
Right, you're right. So you're five. Dana Sandy's Ward Six. I've worked for the city for 20 years. You'd think I know where these lines are.
I've been on the job for a year.
That's right. We've been working on this one for about a month trying to get you on, right? Between work on your side or my side, it's been a tough one to schedule, but we finally got it.
We're here.
We finally got it. Okay, so Ward Five, what's going on in Ward Five? What are some things that you're hearing now as a City Councilmember that are going on in your ward here this fall?
So probably one of the primary things is speeding. That's probably the most calls I get.
Is it my kid?
It could be. You know, there's 60 Second right there and Belmont.
Yep.
They kind of use that as a drag strip sometimes.
Sure, straight roads, no cross streets.
And then right there at Belmont and kind of Adams, that area right there.
Yeah.
You know, we've looked at options. We've put out radars and of course, we put out the radar. People slow down. You take the radar away. So Chief Friedman's been awesome. He's trying to help me with solutions, but you can't put something like a speed table or something because it's a main thoroughfare. So that's where our police vehicles and everything need to go. So you know, we just have to hope people, you know, you get sighted a few times and you slow down, but it's definitely a consistent message that hey, it's going too fast around here.
It's interesting around the city you do that and you're just like, oh, I need a cop there just to hand out tickets. None of that does, that, tell you the truth, that hardly ever works. The radar thing works. Literally different lines on the street make a difference. It's interesting how there's ways to do it without, how do you say, arresting your way out of the problem.
And we've generated full reports and you know, it's, you know, it's not everybody, but it's, you know, there is, they're going five, 10 over maybe, you know, but it's a, it's a consistent message.
As, as I live north of there, and if I head anywhere south of Grand Forks, I go down Belmont, down to 60 Second to make my way out of town.
How fast do you go?
Well, and you get south of 47th. I've lived here long enough. That used to be a terrible road. Maybe the worst road in town. You couldn't speed on it. And now it's this beautiful wide road with two cross streets.
And crosswalks, which is, you know, that's what the scary thing is, right?
But there's not a ton of cross traffic and it's, and yeah, it's hard. Frankly, you get to 60 Second, you look down, you're like, oh, I'm going a little fast, going a little fast.
Would never do that.
I've also worked for the city long enough that south of Adams, there was nothing. So I, I'm not used to people living down there. Yeah, that's, that's a tough one. It's a tough one with no simple answer.
Yeah. And probably the other thing I get is people are really grateful about the growth of Grand Forks right now. You know, when I ran, I was like, I promoted a, you know, we want to do quality of life type stuff. We want to do economic development and, and people are really seeing this change going on right now, which has been awesome. You know, we, we kind of termed the phrase actually today was relentless City Council and leadership. And I think that's where we've been trying to promote a lot of these great things. And we can talk about it here, you know, in the next few minutes, but it's persistency on the leadership of City Council and just making, moving that ball forward, I think has been so awesome. I mean, how can you not see it now? It's visible changes going on.
Well, and that, that leads to, there's a great segue there. It's like, it's like you've, you've seen my notes. It'd been for everyone who knows, he hasn't seen my notes. So with AgriSto's doing work, right? Potato processing, U N D record enrollment, Ultra with a new hospital. The type of work that you're in out at Grand Sky and the U A S industry and the city of Grand Forks, we'll get more into that industry, but the, the people that are being brought in as a city council now, I feel it's shifted to getting the, getting the jobs and the people. Now it's shifted to where do we put them? So I have a question for you from a council standpoint, housing. I know you guys have had lots of discussions with this, another one of those where there's no just single answer. But how, how do you feel the best way for, from a city council or a city standpoint to, to address housing? And by housing, I mean all levels, apartments, single family, all of it.
Yeah. So I mean, first we've got the land, so I don't think, you know, space is not a, an issue. But I think, you know, a lot of these things, you know, and people don't like the word pilot, right? And we've had, we've got people that are willing to come build it and people go like, well, why won't they build it just on their own accord and not, you know, not take, you know, these pilot programs? And it does, it doesn't work that way.
Because they're getting a pilot or a tax break somewhere else.
Right. And I, and I think, you know, and you're, we're not writing them a check when we're talking about pilot. And that's the misconception, right? I think, I think we need a pilot 101 for everybody because, you know, and then you, when you look forward to what we're doing, we're just deferring those, those payments. And so it allows them to build equity, get the building built, certify it, fill it, and then we can start moving people in. So, you know, down in our area, right? Down right there at, you know, 47th, you know, there was going to be, there's a Hugo's, there's going to be a nice apartment complex with some great amenities. I think that, I mean, we've got the opportunity to build it, but it's the matter of trying to make sure that people understand why we're doing it. And we get a lot of the sentiment to, I would want more places to live, but not in my area.
That's, that's fair. Yeah. We need places for people to live. Well, don't build there. Don't build there. I know.
It's crazy. And, you know, I've learned a lot over the last, gosh, over a year, I'm on my second year now. And, you know, it's one of those things that we, you know, we got elected for the reason that people trust us to make decisions. And not everyone's going to agree with them, but, but we, we have problems to solve. And just like any problems that you have to solve, there's only certain ways to do it. There's only, you know, in Ward Five, the, I mean, Hugo's owns that property. We've got a place to build, you know, a great apartment complex. And there's got to be a discussion, right? People don't want to look out their back window and see the back of an apartment complex or something.
And that's fair.
Yeah, absolutely fair. And so that's where the discussion starts, you know?
Yep.
And even with the Randy Richards.
Ray Richards. Yeah, yeah. Randy Richards is a different dude that we're going to see tomorrow.
Different guy. But you know, there's been negotiations and talks about how it's going to be structured and is maybe not going to face that complex and, you know? So you have to start the conversation and that's, that's key is the communication, talking with the citizens and, and seeing what their rub is, right? And then once you learn about that, there's, there's ways to fix that and make sure that, you know, everyone's not going to be a hundred percent agreeable, but maybe we can get halfway there.
Well, and you hear this sometimes that the best negotiation is both sides walk away from the table a little disappointed. Well, I didn't get everything I wanted, but you know, we got, we got some, that's probably a good negotiation, right? Yeah, that's a good negotiation. When you mentioned pilots, I think it's, we're going to have this discussion right here. It's going to be pilot 101. So we have, let's just pick an example down in your ward. You have farmland that is even annexed into the city, right? We're collecting zero taxes on that. Somebody comes in, says, I want to build something. I want to negotiate a pilot, let's say 10 years at 90% or 10 years or whatever. So we started at zero. It started at zero and in 10 years, it's going to be way up here.
Exactly.
That's.
I mean, that's the theory, right?
At no point do you go down. You never go down in a pilot.
Lose money on it. And people just think, you know, we're at City Council writing checks and handing them off to people.
Absolutely not. No. Another good example of a good pilot I thought was Memorial Village Two on campus.
Yes.
So when I went to school here 20 some years ago, that was a parking lot, university parking lot. So the city collected zero taxes on it. Cities probably never collected taxes on that piece of property. You know, developer comes in, we want to develop it. There's the whole softball diamond, all that stuff. So from day one, even with the pilot, the city's collecting more money in that property than they ever have in the history of that property.
And it's full.
And it's full. Right. Talk about housing, addressing some housing stuff. If I, if I were a college student, I would love to live in that, right? Right there on campus, right?
It's a beautiful place.
It's a great spot. Okay. So you talk about amenities and stuff going on. I will say this, you have been one of the biggest cheerleaders of the Ultra Sports Complex since, since the beginning. You've spoken up at many council meetings, hey, everyone, let's understand where we're at right now. You have said those words. Talk about where we're at. There's discussions with phase two and potentially bringing in basketball courts with this facility. We're at a council standpoint, where are we at with that?
So we're, you know, moving forward with the G M P two, I guess.
Correct.
Yeah. So, you know, we were so lucky, I don't say lucky, but we were, we saw that the prices probably were going to, we were going to come in under budget for the first phase and we did. And so because we, we started off at the beginning of this project, if you don't remember, we were going to cut basketball courts, we were going to cut pickleball courts. We weren't going to be able to do a walking track. We were going to have to, we were cut, cut, cut. And now come full 360 and now we're looking at adding in four basketball courts. We're putting the walking track in or the, yeah, the walking track and we're able to, you know,
Pickleball is in there.
The pickleball is in, right?
Adding some sports performance that the Park District does.
There's so many good things that are coming out of this and, you know, there's, there's still stopping points. If we look and say, maybe some of these costs are still pushing above, we know there's a budget. It's not like we're just, the faucet's open. So it could come to a point where we go, you know what? It's just too expensive and we're going to go over budget and we, we, we stopped there. But unless we approve it in City Council to move forward, to even get the pricing, we can't get there.
Right.
And so, you know, one of the things is just keeping that ball moving forward until the point where you either say stop or we put shovels in the ground.
Right. And so fair to say, so right now with phase two is we're sitting at, people put your bid packets together and we'll see what the bids are and that's your next decision point at a council. Or like you said, the bids may come in and not be as favorable and then you guys at that point say, oh, over budget.
But the track records doesn't say it's going to be like that.
Yeah, we'll see where we're at. Let's strike while the iron's hot, right? Yeah, that's, that's good. Another thing you've been very busy with, commercial air service. You've done some travel and visited with some people. Can you talk about probably since what, July to now? You've had a few meetings of trying to expand commercial air service in Grand Forks. Can you talk about what's being done?
Yeah. So we went with the B hand group and some of our other leaders, including Keith and Brandon and a bunch of other folks. We went to Utah first to go see Sky West, their corporate headquarters out there. And, you know, we met with them, we gave them a presentation of why this is a good deal, right? Delta being the only air service out of here, you know, besides Allegiant, they make a ton of profit. You know, you know, no wonder they like flying out of here, but that doesn't help the average citizen get the cost down, right? And that's, if you ask anyone, they'll say, I want a good schedule and I want lower costs on my airfare. And they're not, they're not getting either one of those at the moment. And so, you know, the Sky West was very amicable to, to talking with us. And I think that's going to be a look really good moving forward. And then the next, the week later, we went to Chicago to go see United and right in their headquarters, right there. And I forgot the name of the tower now, but you know, really a beautiful building, but they were very also amicable about, you know, let's, let's do this and let's move forward. We've got the business case now. We've got the, you know, between the university, Grand Sky, the Air Force Base, all these, and the hospitals. I mean, we will definitely, any flight I'm on out here is full.
The, the dynamic of Grand Forks is a lot different than last time United was here.
Yeah. And one of the big things with this is we're going to promote it, right? We, when we did this the last time, and that was before my time, it, it was just like set it and forget it. And that, and that wasn't, that wasn't a good way to do it. And so I think now we've got a marketing campaign will, will really help promote this. And, you know, I think, you know, I think the mayor, myself and a bunch of city council people, we're going to be on that first flight to Denver. So, you know, I think it's, there's a lot of added bonus to that and people are really, really excited. Then you add in Delta, if they can add a couple more flights.
Sure, competition.
Because no one likes that 5:00 AM flight too, right?
Been on it, been on it.
No fun. You know, you add in a couple more flights for convenience and you're not spending, you know, you're either spending 20 minutes running through the airport or you're spending four hours sitting in Minneapolis. When you give them those options, people are going to choose the option to fly because it's more convenient than it is to drive. And sometimes driving is more convenient right now.
Yeah.
This is awesome. I mean, if we can do this and get this push through, I think it's a huge quality of life thing.
For, for those of us not in aviation, can you talk about it real quick? So you said you met with a company called Sky West. Now that's not an airline, but that's a carrier and they represent airlines. Because then you also met with an airline. Can you talk about just the, what's Sky West different than United? Can you talk about that real quick?
Two separate airlines, you know, the airlines that they're flying. So Sky West is the, you know, the smaller, smaller carrier. And United is a kind of a subset of that, right? And so I don't know how to really define it, but it's just different carriers that could come in and provide different service. Like Sky West, their central, one of their hubs is in Denver.
Oh, okay, okay.
Once you get to Denver, you can pretty much go anywhere you want.
Just like in Minneapolis. It is. Denver is one of those airports. Yeah.
So I think it just gives people a lot more options and a lot more people are going, you know, to the, the west coast now for their businesses and corporates. And so I think it's a huge value.
Does it, does it bother you because I know whenever I would have meetings out west and I'd have to get on a plane, I'd have to fly an hour in the wrong direction.
I watch, I watch Grand Forks on the map as I fly back over it, you know?
I, I, I once had a, I had a pilot, pilot was great and the pilot was pointing out, hey, folks, we're over this and we're over this. And it was, it was nice, right? You can't see that. And he even said, as we're flying, hey, folks, we're over Grand Forks. I'm like, wow.
Yeah, I'm back where I started.
I'm back where I started and here we are. But no, that was good. In the middle of all this, you have your just regular government stuff, right? Including the 2026 budget, right? This budget, you had to work on a three, within a 3% cap on, on taxes collected per, per the government. So you as a city council member, I asked this to new city council members, hey, good luck. The first thing you have to do is budgets and it's hard and it's a lot and all that stuff. You're now in it a little bit. Have you found your wheelhouse within the budget, within the budget process? Like things you look for or like, how do you, how do you, Ward Five, City Councilmember Mike Friedols, approach the budget discussions?
You know, we, we walk through it and, you know, we, we look to say, you know, the city is not meant to fund everyone that needs money, right? And we, we may have done that in the past and given money to organizations that needed it. But we've kept, we've kept feeding them. And so a lot of those things, you know, when we looked at the budget, we realized, hey, there is options for them to go start making their own money and learn how to fish themselves, right? I think that's really important. And so you look at, you know, take, you know, the, because the charitable contribution type stuff.
Sure, sure. Any nonprofit.
Any nonprofit, you know, and there's a lot of money being made in that. And so, you know, you look at caps, you look at how people are making money. And if you can give them the opportunity to go, you know, fund themselves and kind of do stuff in the future, you can, you know, and we, we delay the, we're not going to say like, day one of 2026, your budget is cut.
Sure.
You know, we, we pushed the, pushed the timeline and allow them to go off and, and, and learn how to do this themselves. But there's other things like, you know, the arts and grants type stuff. You realize the citizens were really upset about that, right? And it wasn't a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money. No.
And the whole scheme of the budget.
Fills a room though.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. And so, you know, we realize, hey, that's important to people, right? And so that, that got added back in. And so, you know, there's other, you know, you look at, you go line item by line item. And, you know, the mayor does a really good job of fine tuning this budget. I think, you know, you know, people may complain and say, city just, you know, spends willy nilly and they're spending on all the, there is discussions that go on on every single item in that budget.
Sure.
And, and it's not done without some hardship, some, you know, some really hard discussions. And, and again, you're not going to make everyone happy when it comes to the budget. And so, but again, the faucet isn't 100% open and you can't do that, especially with the 3% cap. You know, everyone took a little haircut everywhere. And I think at the end of the day, we will get through this again and, you know, we approved it and it's, and it's moving forward. So I think, you know, every year is going to be a little bit of a challenge, but it's way different this year than it was day one. Literally day, like my first city council meeting, you know, July of last year, they're like, here's this big binder, learn it and know it.
The timing of the city council elections, it's in city code and I understand that, but I've always said that. I'm just like, it's not fair to these new council members.
Yeah. Tricia Berg and I looked at each other, we're like, oh my gosh.
At least you had each other.
Yeah, cry on each other's shoulders. But yeah, so I mean, you, you get through it and you learn and you, you learn what's the, what's important to people too. Because, you know, I've never had so many emails and phone calls and everything in my life on some of those things that are really important.
I always find it interesting of, you know, when it comes to the budget, like you said, is, is the, you know, the, the arts budgeting, right? From a dollar, of all the things in that 200 page binder, that's one of the smaller dollar amounts in a line item, right? But, but how much that dollar amount means to people, right? And it fills a room, right? You start talking capital improvement budgets and roads and whatnot. And I think we've done a really good job with roads around here considering the climate we're in.
Everyone wants the roads plowed or, you know, pleased to show up and all that good stuff.
Well, this, this road needs work. All right. Well, we're going to fix it. Well, don't, don't do road construction. No, no, those two things don't work. Those two things don't work. We got to do something. And I, I want to give kudos here to our finance department, Marine Store, said the director and stuff. By the time things get to you at a council level, some, some of those really hard discussions of within departments, you don't get what you want or no, you can't, you can't get the, you, you can't, you can't buy this vehicle this year.
Yeah.
Marine does that or the, or the finance department does. I'm saying Marine, but it find it. So when we got this 3% cap and we kind of saw it coming, it was, oh, that, that sounds big and nasty. But then we looked at it, we're like, ah, we've been working in the 3% for years, right? We, we can do this.
Yeah. I mean, when we get, especially they give the budget summary or budget and review, like a couple, like little PowerPoint. I mean, that saves, you know, saves a ton of stuff because you, you look at the real budget. I mean, it's a, you know.
He takes the 200 page book and puts it into an eight page book. Yeah. They do a nice job.
Yeah. The whole team does a great job.
Yep. Okay. Non-city council stuff. This is a busy week for you. So, so I, before we get into the U A S summit, I want to ask you this, your work with Northrop Grumman, things are hopping out there at Grand Sky, right? As, as we talked, one of the first questions I asked you is about housing. Lots of people coming in. You, you guys are wheeling and dealing out there. Talk a little bit at what you can talk about. I know you have government contracts of how things are going out there. Understand if, if you're looking to be an aviation mechanic, you may have a job for people. Just, just talk about your day job a little bit.
Yeah. And so I can, I can talk about that. So our biggest, you know, program we've got right now is called Range Hawk. And so just a real quick summary and this is all unclassified, right? It's converting the old Global Hawks that the Air Force divert, divested probably two, three years ago. And we're making them look up to see hypersonics.
Right.
So cool technology.
So the best description is those Global Hawks at the Air Force Base had cameras that pointed down. You have, you, your company is working at having cameras that point up.
Yep. We've completely gutted the aircraft, put in a new comm system. We've put in all new wiring, taken out what some of the bigger antennas and since technology has changed, some of the antennas that were, you know, four meter dish are now the size of a plate.
Right.
So now we've put all that in and we're in the process of testing out those aircraft, making sure all the cables work, making sure everything's flyable. And then come next year, early next year, we're going to get that plane off the ground. Hopefully before the Air Force tears up their runway.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole other thing, but that's beyond you. That's beyond you. So, so with that, you're, you guys, I know the company is out there at Grand Sky. I can't have a meeting with you guys without, oh yeah, we're looking to hire this and we're looking to hire that. We're looking to hire this. So the, when we talk about aviation industry here in Grand Forks, it's not just pilots. It's, it's across the board. You guys are looking at.
You even look right now, I think in, on our website, we've probably got at least nine or 10 posts right now. We're looking for quality people. We're looking, not just quality people, but mission assurance people.
They're all quality people. Right, yeah.
Industrial engineers, mechanical engineers, pilots, and then also test engineers, people that are, can run computers and test the aircraft when they fly. And then everyone, then the biggest is, you know, our mechanic, mechs and techs. And it's not just folks cranking on a jet. It's people that know computers. It's people that know the insides of a very smart aircraft. And so from wiring to power, to power on an aircraft, to flight surfaces, knowing, you know, composites on how to, you know, fix a part on an airplane on the wing surface, all that stuff is going to be needed. And right now we're, we're, we keep looking, everyone, our biggest income from people is N C T C right now. And we love working with them. They're, they're producing people, their class sizes have increased and.
But probably every class that comes out, you, you could grab them all, right? You want more.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And we've, I think we always have a rec in for at least one or two mechs and techs. Right now we are, we are building one aircraft. I've got, you know, we're not probably not going to build all 24 out. But, you know, when we look at how many it's going to go on for the next few years, we're going to need a lot more people.
Sure. No, that, no, that's, that's really interesting. I love talking to you guys out there in the work you guys are doing. And it's, because as a guy like me, it's just, people ask me, they're like, oh, that's, that's where Grand Sky. And I'm like, yeah, I don't know what they do. So, so talking to you guys, it's, it's really, it's really eye opening and really interesting.
Yeah, it's good stuff. And you know, in the Grand Sky, the whole park, right? I mean, it's evolutionary to what we're doing out there, the whole park. And so with Tom Sawyer and Scott Meyer, they're, they're all like pushing the envelope on, on what we can do out there. I mean, I won't talk about their programs because it's probably not my swim lane, but they've done some really, really cool stuff out there. This, you know, with Project Ultra and some of that.
And I think, I think it's interesting is you guys see it too, is that now we have other countries. Hey, how do you do this military base, private sector thing working? Yeah, there's enhanced use lease. What does this all look like? There are not just other states or other, other countries are looking at how it's being done here.
It's an absolute model of how you should do things right. But one key thing is you need good legislative folks.
Yeah, yeah.
If you, you can't do it alone. And so without that, it just falls apart.
And by legislative state and federal level, like it works in North Dakota because you and I can make a phone call and I can, I can probably not just so much get his office, I can almost talk to our senator.
That blows people's minds. But yeah, I mean, it's exactly the reason we're so successful is because we've got that, that large hammer behind us, but they are, they're always looking forward to what's the next best thing.
So along those lines, part of us talking to senators, whereas we're both probably going to see them here in the next couple of days. In Grand Forks this week is the U A S summit. So if you're not in the industry, you're like, okay, whatever, there's a conference going on. This thing is massive. It's then the, we have what? Two members of the, the joint chiefs here?
Yeah.
This week in Grand Forks, there's 12 of them and we have two.
Yeah.
You know, not bad. Just talk about the U A S summit and just within the industry, how big of a deal it is.
So it's huge. You know, it's, we may be, you know, we, we say we, we punch above our weight class. And we absolutely do when it comes to this. B B I running it, we've, they've got, you know, so many companies, I think they're sold out in booths. I'm not sure how many that is, but they've got at least like eight to 900 people registered for this thing. You got senators coming, you've got everyone.
Majority of them traveling from all over the world to get here.
Yep. And despite a government shutdown, we're still expecting, you know, still show up for this. And it really becomes the, one of the greatest networking events you will ever attend. It's, you know, people, if you're looking for a job or you're looking for a technology to integrate into your technology, which is a lot of the stuff that we do, U A S summit is, is definitely in the forefront of all that. It's, it's amazing. The companies, you're like, oh, I didn't know this company in Fargo did specialty coatings that prevent ice, you know, ice.
That's interesting. Right, yeah.
You're like, hey, and so you connect them with people at Northrop and now, now you're, you're working together. And so in the universities there, the Air Force Base is there, you get all these different industries together, the city's there. Everyone, you can say, hey, let, we got a conference room, let's go talk. Next thing you know, you're building this relationship with people and now you're all talking about industry together and, and using technologies together, which is what we do here, innovation, right?
And then there's a, there's a portion of this, which I always think is kind of cool, right? So this room is full of this conference, smart people, it's a lot of engineers, people who think outside of the box. And there's a portion of this conference where you have industries, I'm going to say, as Northrop Grumman comes, hey, we're looking for something like this. And whether a company is already doing that or they go, oh, I think I can do that. And then you have the other side where it's companies saying, we do this specialty.
Right.
And this is where we think it can help you, these company, within your project over here. And just that synergy that goes on there. And frankly, it happens with the US Senator in the middle of it, right? Just doing that.
Yeah, I was looking through some of my old photos, you know, a couple of years ago, we had, you know, Governor, at the time, Governor Burgum standing in my, in our booth, like, eh, just, you know, just like random guy, you know, just say like, hey, come and say hi and see what, say hi to everybody. And, you know, it happens with everybody from, from Senator Kramer, Senator Hoven. They all just pop their heads in. And I think it's just, it's such a great event. We, we look forward to this every year.
Yep. This is a fun one. This is a fun. All right, Mike. And so I try to do this every time when I do these podcasts. All right. Something kind of fun, something not, not our day job. So I'm going to stick to the aviation theme. All right. I'm going to stick to the aviation theme. Pilots on a plane, right? Do you realize they have, the, the authority they have on the plane is quite extensive, right? They, they can, they can, they're the equivalent of law enforcement. They can arrest people, they can find people. You break a rule up there or what they think, they, they, they can do, they have that authority. If you pass away in a long flight, they can, was it, they can witness the will. Wow. They have that authority. I had no idea. I had no idea. I'm like, that's a weird thing, but evidently that falls. And have you ever seen the movie Airplane?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That whole, of course, right? The whole theme of that movie, right? Does they get food poisoning on the plane? Who's going to fly the plane? I don't know if this is a result of the movie, but you know that the flight crew all get different meals.
Interesting. I did not know that.
So if somebody gets sick due to food poisoning.
That'd be funny if that was based on the fact.
Wouldn't that be funny if that's based on the, I was going to say, because they, it's whoever had the fish or whoever had the chicken or, you know, they all get sick. So, so they give the flight crew different meals and that is very much on purpose.
But now it's only first class. You don't get food everywhere anymore.
I've only had a meal on a flight once.
I just get a bag of pretzels.
Yeah. And it was an anniversary trip and we, we, we were like, you know what? We're going to do first class. My wife and I, we're going to do this. And all of a sudden we got fed and we're like, what do you know? So Mike, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I know it's a crazy week for you. The, the U A S summit, everything. Good luck this week. Hopefully you make some connections out, you have the, make more connections, right?
I invite people how you can still get a ticket. You know, it's a, it's a great event. And if you're looking for a job or network or looking for a cool technology, come on out.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's something. All right, Mike. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to Mike Friedols, Ward Five City Councilmember for joining us on episode 45 of the City Chatter Podcast. You want to catch this episode or any previous episode, go to grandforksgov.com/podcast. We'll catch you next time. You want to catch this episode or any previous episode, go to grandforksgov.com/podcast. We'll catch you next time.